I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Uh, do you want me to bring it up here, Mike?
Please.
Okay, I would like, um, excuse me, let me find it. Check number 331278 to FMG Architects for thirteen thousand three hundred seventy-three dollars, voted on separately, and I would like check number 331288 to Hodges and Louisey for four thousand sixty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents, voted separately. Those are the two.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Carol, you're gonna have those numbers for us when we get to that point?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. We're also gonna make the change to the personnel recommendations. Uh, it was presented to us as twenty-one through forty-eight. Uh, so we will now have the personnel recommendations twenty-one through fifty-four as amended. We'll read those into the motion when we get there. Do we have any changes to the agenda tonight?
I move we set the agenda as amended.
Second. It's a motion by Beyanti, second by Drake. Roll call.
Ms. Campbell?
Yes.
Mrs. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Drake?
Yes.
Mr. Waltz?
Yes.
Mrs. Beyanti?
Yes.
And Mr. Munda?
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Very good. Uh, we have no recognitions this evening. Uh, reception is a visitor. Do we have anybody sign in?
No sir.
Now, this is the time the public can address the board. Nobody wishes to address the board? Thank you. We're gonna run along with the president's report. Uh, John did not leave anything, but I would like to, uh, just say a personal thank you. I'm sure on behalf of the board, anybody that's out at Gurnee Days, outstanding. Um, setting up the one hundred year celebration in the booth, eating taco bags, uh, spending time having my picture placed past your, or plastered all over Facebook. That was fantastic. You guys did a great job. I know there was a, a number of people behind the scenes, uh, that, uh, put in a lot of time and energy, uh, collecting a lot of that wonderful, uh, information on one hundred years of, uh, excellent educational services being provided here at Warren Township High School. I think it was, uh, one gentleman was in there doing the Trivial Pursuit. It was pretty least taught me every time. I had no idea who the board president was in nineteen sixty-three. But, uh, outstanding job. Uh, I know you, you put in a lot of time, a lot of hours. I know I was there a couple of nights, I think two of the nights. Um, and I know John and, uh, Jane were in there and, uh, I saw Kim and a few other people there. But, uh, thank you very much. It was a, a great thing. Uh, there's a lot of people at, uh, St. Thomas that, uh, were very pleased to see Warren region out, especially in our hundred years.
My pleasure. And Gurnee Days is, you know, relative to, uh, other festivals and things, it really is a, uh, very nice festival. And they have a great venue, and so I think it was a pleasure for us, Ken, to kick off some of our centennial stuff and get out there. And we even talked while we were there this weekend about, you know, even though it was our centennial, so that prompted us to be an out there, that there was value in it beyond this year. So it was a really good conversation. Thanks.
Great, great one off, a lot of itching. Uh, we didn't win the Riveting Contest.
Yeah, we did not win the Riveting Contest.
No.
They did, but, uh, uh, Coach did, uh, Jazz and I did pick the winner, so he, uh, although they didn't win, he picked who was gonna win. There was a fix on that, so, really fun.
Uh, do we have anything else, Jean, on the triple I campus?
I haven't heard anything actual since last time.
Moving along then, uh, we have no committee reports, so we'll go right into the superintendent's report. Dr. Oliver?
A few small pieces, and then we'll move on to a, a couple of, uh, updates and presentations. We did give two FOIA's since the last board meeting. Uh, FOIA from Betty Brown regarding a copy of our Utesas proposals, uh, that were, uh, sent into the district in our last, uh, request for proposals, and a FOIA from Diane Redo of the Chicago Tribune, uh, related to our process of placing students into our courses here at Warren. We also, the board, uh, received earlier, uh, tonight, another copy of the Keeping Posted, so we wanted to make sure that we were aware that, uh, a lot of our information that we could give to the Village of Gurnee was, was in the copy of, uh, of the Keeping Posted. We also, for the board, uh, we've given a, a lanyard that was distributed to our staff today, uh, as part of our centennial. It's just a little welcome back to school gift. We're also excited that, uh, later this week, uh, we hope that all of our staff and students will receive a T-shirt, uh, that was sponsored, thanks to our Centennial Committee out working for community sponsors and, uh, looking for ways to offset some costs of some things. So we'll make sure that the board gives, uh, one of those T-shirts as well to help join in with the whole, uh, school community in terms of our centennial T-shirts. We are scheduled tentatively for a policy meeting on September the thirteenth. Uh, we'll do that just like we, uh, uh, did tonight and, uh, plan on starting that meeting around five forty-five, uh, prior to the six thirty closed session, so September thirteenth at five forty-five, uh, and, uh, we'll send that out to all, uh, all of our board members and, uh, Barn will be there for sure as a standing member. August thirty-first, as a reminder, we have our intergovernmental picnic at six P.M. We're hosting that at Oak Plain. Uh, most people have responded that they're able to make it, so if you haven't responded yet or are still checking your calendar, uh, please let Jean know that. We're getting, obviously, our RCPs from the other, uh, org, uh, organizations as well. And just a, a couple of, uh, quick updates, our centennial calendar, we have more copies here if you, uh, need one of those. We gave them at the last meeting. We have them around now, all of our teachers have them, uh, which we hope to post in all our classrooms and throughout the schools, uh, just to bring a visual reminder for our kids that it's a special year for us. Uh, specifically coming up this Saturday, we have, uh, bears are practicing here as part of our centennial, uh, so that'll start at five thirty. Uh, gates open at three thirty, I believe, and so we're still expecting a pretty good crowd and, and the bears, as well as the, uh, Gurnee Police Department have been providing a lot of information and services to us to prepare for that. We still, uh, this week have, uh, freshmen and juniors that are coming in tomorrow for their orientation. Uh, Thursday, all of our kids come in for their first day of school, and then, uh, Friday, as part of our school day, both campuses are planning, uh, back-to-school assemblies with some fun activities, uh, kind of whole-school activities for the kids to kick off our centennial. And then our Six Flags Day is September seventeenth, that's right around the corner, so, uh, and the homecoming is right at the end of September, so next couple of weeks, we're gonna be really busy with some activities.
I, I had a question. We don't have exclusive rights at, uh, at, um, Six Flags, do we? The reason I ask is I got a flyer because, uh, my granddaughter is in Spalding, and they are having bears on September seventeenth at Six Flags too. So I didn't know, did we go together to do this, or is it separate?
Yeah, so what we did was as part of our, obviously for the Warren community, what we, what we did was also reach out to all of our sender districts, just to say, you know, how do you stand, especially because it's a kid function, right? And what we first wanted to do is make sure that our students, as well as the students at all of our sender districts, uh, knew about this and invited, uh, children there. So we, then we referred to it as, uh, we tried to refer to it as the Warren community, meaning our alumni, our students, our parents, our sender schools, and obviously their families. And so, uh, there's code, access codes to buy tickets, and while we can't control everything, uh, the initial thought was that the more we promote it within the, uh, Gurnee community, it's all good. The Chamber of Commerce has been trying to promote it, obviously, even if we got, um, you know, the, the goal would be that if we had, you know, six, seven, eight, nine thousand people all from, right, the Gurnee and Warren Township community, it would be awesome. So, doesn't mean a hundred percent of the people will be from there, but generally, it's how they work.
I'm confused, is the money all going to Warren's? Or because the, the flyer I got said that the money was gonna go to the PTO for, uh, District Fifty-Six, so I was totally confused, and I forgot about it until just now.
Yeah, I'd be interested in seeing that flyer. All the flyers that were created were created by Six Flags, all the flyers that were created were created by Six Flags, and they all say that the five dollars for each ticket goes to Warren Township High School. So the funny note should come here, I'd be interested in seeing it, Liz.
I'll see if I can find it.
Right, because they, they created it.
Because I was really surprised. I didn't know, what am I gonna do?
So, sounds good. So that is, so we're excited about that, that's right around the corner, and homecoming's at the end of, I think, this September, so Zoom Towns will be busy. And, uh, two more things we wanted to talk about. First was we wanted to talk a little bit about, uh, our transition within food service, and so I'm gonna, uh, turn it over to Carol to make a few introductions and talk about our fundamentally exciting transition in food service.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, we have two representative for Quest, uh, Management Services, which is our new food service, uh, provider. Uh, here we have Nick Sicaro, who is the president of Quest, and Jason Rosegay, who is our new food service director. So I'm gonna invite them to the podium to talk a little bit about Quest, just spend a few minutes talking about, uh, what we've been doing at Warren and what they're planning for our students, uh, that are gonna be arriving this week. So, thank you, gentlemen.
Jason said, do I go up or do I stay here? And I thought it'd be weird if there was just another person standing here, so I'll just a little intro to, to Quest and then, uh, invite Jason up to tell you a little bit more about what we're doing here at Warren. So, um, I'm representing Quest on behalf of our owner, Mike McTaggart. Uh, he is very sorry that he's not here tonight. He has known Carol for a very long time and has been extremely interested in developing a partnership with Warren Township High School for an awfully long time. He's taking his middle son off to, uh, college today, uh, and moving him into University of Iowa, so obviously that takes precedent, but you wanted to make sure that, that, uh, that we said hi, or that he said hi, excuse me. Um, so if you guys, if you're not familiar with Quest, um, we're based out of Lombard. Uh, we've been in business for, we just finished up our thirty-first school year. Um, we started, Mike, uh, again, our owner, his father Dave McTaggart founded our company in nineteen eighty-five. Um, Dave's first hire was a lady named Sandy Casper-Zack, who's our co-founder and still works for us. Um, Sandy is Jean Pignator's sister. If you guys are familiar with her, Jean Pignator is the legendary basketball coach at Saint Joe's, um, in, in Westchester. He's coached Isaiah Thomas, has had a movie made about him, he's a big deal. Um, so Dave and Sandy founded Quest in, uh, in nineteen eighty-five. Um, Sandy was a restaurateur, uh, all of her life, and she brought a ton of her old family recipes, Italian recipes to Quest, and we're still using them today. Um, her Italian beer, her marinara sauce, all those things are Sandy's old recipes from way back in the day, actually Sandy's family's recipes from, from prior to that. Um, and Jean really helped us, um, grow in the pro-kill school community. Um, and so Dave and Sandy ran Quest for, um, about fifteen to eighteen years before Mike got involved, and once Mike got involved, we started to expand into the public school, um, segment. And so some of our schools that we've worked with for quite some time, uh, Lumberock North and South High Schools have been partners of ours for ten years. Uh, we work with the, all the main township, uh, high schools. We just started at Nutria last year, um, the Hinsdale Schools, um, Winoka High Schools. So these large high schools that are outside of the National School Loan Program really have become our, our sweet spot, if you will. Um, and it's something that we think we do very, very well. One of the things that, um, I've learned, that my, my past before I came to Quest was, um, in the higher ed environment and, and food service. And what I found when I came to Quest is that we're really offering a higher ed type of experience in the, in the K-12 environment, specifically in high schools. And a lot of our competitors don't do that. A lot of our competitors, you know, K-12 food service, just being candid, isn't really viewed in the highest regard in the food service industry, and there's a lot of folks that don't necessarily send their most talented folks into the K-12 segment, don't really focus on the culinary development in the K-12 segment, um, like we do. And we have really, uh, give kudos to Mike, created a great niche here in the Chicagoland area. All of our accounts are here in Chicagoland. Uh, we don't have any accounts outside of the greater Chicago area, and that's by design. Um, we really want to be attentive and accessible and responsive to folks like Carol, to individual, um, students and parents as needed. And, you know, at the end of the day, uh, they started the company with a very simple philosophy, and it's something we're still doing today, and that's cook food from scratch, make it taste good, and pay really close attention to your customers. And it's something we've been doing from day one, and we couldn't be more proud to be a part of the Warren community and couldn't be more excited about what we're set to do here, uh, as the school year opens. So, um, I just wanna personally thank Carol, the facilities team here, um, they have just been phenomenal, honest to God. The, the partnership that we've had here from day one, uh, there's been a substantial amount of renovations going on over at Oak Plain. Um, if you guys have seen the serving environment over there, it was kind of broken up into three very separate sort of restricted areas, and we've opened it up into one big food court now. Um, there's been some, uh, work going on over here at Almond, but certainly much less expensive than what's been going on over at Oak Plain. And man, every time we brought an idea to the table, um, Carol and the facilities crew have just been like, okay, cool, let's do it. Um, and, and it's just been fantastic. And they know what they're doing, which is the other really great thing. So, uh, we couldn't be more excited about the enhancements that have been made. I think the students are gonna, gonna be super excited when they come back. We had the opportunity to interact with some of the students after we were awarded the, um, the contract at the end of the year and get some of their feedback about specific changes they would like to see made as we go into the new year. And that's a big part of our program as well. These food service advisory committees are something that have been a cornerstone of, of us and what we do and who we are, and we're excited to have ready-made groups here at both campuses, um, that we've already started that dialogue with, so, uh, we'll, we'll definitely look to keep that moving forward. I'm sure there'll be some bumps along the road as we get started here in the new year with the new company and, um, new point-of-sale system and new facilities and all that good sort of stuff, but we'll, we'll work through it. At the end of the day, we keep putting out good food and listening to the students will be in great shape. Um, I do want to introduce Jason Rosegay, our, uh, food service director here. Come on up, Jason. Um, we're excited, uh, for those of you that know Liz, and has been a part of the community for a long time, Liz has, uh, joined the Quest team here at Warren, and we're extremely excited about that. So Liz is gonna be, uh, working, uh, here at the Almond campus, directing some of the day-to-day stuff here, and then another Quest employee who was running one of the Nutria campuses for us, uh, Dan Sheehan is gonna be running the, uh, the Oak Plain campus. So we're excited to have someone that knows the, the Warren community here with us and is so well, uh, so well-liked and regarded by the Warren community on board. Excited to have Dan, someone that has proven himself, uh, with us, and then Jason, one of the things that we've been really focused on in the last year, few years, is, you know, if you're gonna be cooking from scratch and delivering this kind of high-quality experience to students, um, you gotta have people that know how to cook. And, uh, we've really been focused on investing more in culinarians in, in our, uh, in our accounts, and Jason's got a wonderful background in, in culinary development. Um, he's a great, great cook. I'm excited for him to show off some of his stuff to you guys as the year unfolds, so, uh, excited to have Jason on board as well. So, Jason, you wanna maybe talk just a little bit about some of, kind of what the food program's gonna look like? I don't know if any of you were at Oak Plain on Tuesday. We did, uh, we opened up all the stations. I can see there's a couple of familiar faces that were there, and, um, the teachers were blown away by the looks on their faces, so kind of gave some ideas and stuff what the kids are gonna be like, so a little bit of direction and stuff is needed, but everybody was wowed by the food. So we had salad bar, we had what we call our buffet station, which is made-to-order Mexican food. We can do the burritos and the burrito bowls and taco salads, and then we have our hemispheres, which is international cuisine. And then we have our made-to-order deli station. We put in, uh, panini machines in both campuses, so we can do the panini press machines, uh, pizza and pasta. And then, of course, the grill station, which is everybody's favorite, burgers and everything and stuff. And the burgers we hear used are just amazing. So everybody seems to like it, and then beverages. I've never, I mean, it looks like a grocery store on there. So we're all getting all set up and all the crazy chips that the kids like. Liz has been a fountain of information for us, so we know what the kids like ahead of time, so. Anything spicy. So, you know, part of the burger and everything, we put chorizo on, which is a spicy Mexican sausage. Some of the accounts use it, some of them don't. I mean, it was one of the first things that all the people in the kitchen are like, we need this. And so Dan and Liz ordered it up and we got it in, so. So it's been exciting so far. I'm excited to be here. This is my first K through twelve experience. I've mainly, uh, been in business dining, so like office buildings and healthcare. So the dietary restrictions and the allergens and everything, I'm well-trained in, so. Any kind of questions that the kids have about that, I can serve you.
Since I'm gluten-free, I'm gonna ask, why, uh, are you going to have some sort of gluten-free? And it'll be advertised as gluten-free?
Yes, we do stock gluten-free breads. Uh, we did a function at Oak Plain on Monday, and we had the gluten-free breads out there that day, and a lot of the teachers that were here for training went to the gluten-free bread and were like, where did you get this? It's amazing. It actually tastes good, tastes like bread. So, so far, so good.
So you're able to meet specific dietary restrictions?
Correct, correct.
Did the, how will you know which students need, so that you don't cook up like a lot of?
They're gonna have to let us know.
Okay, how will they do that?
They can come talk to myself, they can come talk to Liz, they can talk to Dan. Also, in the future, our menus will have, um, code down that'll say what's in each item.
Oh.
So, anyway, it'll, it's just a very simple code.
Like Q, Q, uh?
Icons that'll show things like gluten or dairy or eggs.
Like, like in the, in the regular restaurants, do they include gluten-free?
Correct, correct.
Or what, eggs or peanuts or whatever.
Just ask, ask the chef manager that's on site, either Liz at this campus or Dan at the other campus, and they'll be able to explain it.
Okay, I, I, 'cause I know the student has dietary restrictions, so.
Well, we have one dean over at the Oak Plain one that's allergic to strawberries, so we already know that one.
Great, great. Well, I would like to personally thank them for noticing that our administration and our committees are outstanding. We know that, but it's nice to hear it from the outside.
One last parting shot, and then we'll get out of the way and let the meeting, um, let the meeting roll on here. You know, the, there's always a natural, I just wanna address this sort of head-on, there's always a natural tension between providing food that students want and providing food that parents feel okay with, and the, you know, foundation underneath all of that is how much does all of this stuff cost, right? So, um, in, through the proposal process, there was pricing provided to us specifically around what sort of the value meals look like, so for students to make sure that they can get an entree, a beverage, and a, and a side of fruit, for example. Um, we're, we have not made any adjustments to the value meal pricing going into this coming school year, so I wanna make sure that that's clear. We're still obviously obligated to provide, um, options for students who qualify for free lunch, and I have to say, it's a personal passion of, of mine. I used to work in hunger relief, and this is something that I'm very passionate about, and I think the experiences that those students have will be far and above what they've experienced before. Um, we find that time and time again, that when we come into a location, what we offer for the students who qualify for free lunch and the way that those offerings are sort of packaged for those students, um, is a much better experience than what most students have had before. But I will say that when we offer new options, um, some of those things are gonna come at price points that are very comparable to what the value meals are now, and some of them are gonna be higher price points. So we're giving students more options, we're not mandating that they go buy higher-priced items, if that makes sense. Um, the quality and I think the offerings for the value meals and those things that are available for the students who want those, um, I think are only gonna improve, and again, they're at the same price points as what they've been. So, um, a lot of times the questions come up, well, how does all this stuff get paid for? It's not about charging each individual student more, it's about getting more students to eat. At Glenbrook, we serve eighty-five percent of the students something every day, eighty-five percent. So, um, that, you know, there's, there's consequences, or not consequences, there are, um, you know, things around the hours of operation, being open longer, taking care of students more in the morning, after school as they transition to practices, all those kinds of things. Um, it's not about feeding them junk, it's not about having them spend a bunch of money on slushies or anything like that, that's not what we're about. It's about getting the stu, Jason even mentioned the beverages and the chips, their baked chips, their, um, you know, light popcorn, there are all these kinds of things that we just give our operators so much more flexibility to work with different providers and different purveyors to bring that kind of product in, um, versus really restricting it, and it's, it's about options, it's about choice, it's not about, um, raising the prices on everyone. And I wanna, it's something I think that's important for us, that we wanna make sure that we're stating early and often, um, that the, that again, the students who want the value meals, the students who rely on the free meals, um, we feel very confident that their experience is only gonna grow, and they're gonna feel, um, more engaged in the dieting program than they, they did in the past. So, hope that's okay. Carol, just sort of put that out there, but it's an important point that often comes up early in our relationships with folks, and we'd rather just sort of hit that on and be upfront on.
The one thing we forgot to add is Glenbrook is an open campus, so they have the option of going out to lunch every day, and they, they've got eighty-five percent participation, so, uh, it's, you know, that's, that's quite something to be said. So we look forward to having regular food service committee meetings with our students, and hopefully we'll get some students to record back, uh, to the board and, uh, give them their pay. But, uh, like Nick said, we had an institute, uh, day meeting. Willie did a formal, uh, survey of the staff, and they were so complimentary about the gluten-free, about the fruit selections, about all the really great options and flavors that, that Quest had presented. So, thank you very much, and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Willie's gonna split her proposal presentation. The seal of by literacy, which we've been talking about, and she's gonna get some update on it. I also wanna compliment Willie on the instructional team. Uh, we did have a, a great in-service day on Monday, pulled together some great information on, uh, servicing English-language learners, uh, making sure that our guidelines for, uh, IEP and five oh four students are, uh, attended to by all of our staff, and, uh, obviously brought in a, a great speaker to help us kind of transition into the SAT, so, uh, couple of different items there were pulled together on a great day one of, of professional development for our staff, and then our principals, uh, took the lead on that for day two today. Uh, got into some more building-based discussions, breaking down into departments and GLTs, and so it was really nice two days of, of starting big and kind of working down to smaller, smaller details. And the seal of by literacy is a very important, uh, uh, concept and initiative that we are undertaking, so for years' worth.
Okay, um, this started, I think, last year with the state of Illinois, and some school districts participated last year. We had two new foreign language lead teachers last year, so we didn't wanna undertake that, but we kind of learned a lot last year. So, basically, maybe not. Maybe not. Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you. Um, this is from the Illinois State Board of Ed. It's basically, it's a program to establish students or graduates who have a high level of performance in more than one language, so they wanted to recognize those students. And the purpose of the program, and this is again through ISBE, is basically just to encourage pupils to study languages, um, to certify that they're gonna attain this by literacy. Colleges are gonna wanna see this, that would be one thing. Um, they have talked about the Illinois schools, if a student had this on their transcript, the seal, that they would earn two years of foreign language at the college level. So that's still in the process, but, um, that's their, their goal for that. Um, prepare students for the twenty-first century skills, recognize the value of foreign language and native language instruction in public schools, and to strengthen the intergroup relationships and firm the value of diversity in schools. So I think, you know, they, this is a good thing, and we have a lot of students who could actually benefit from this. Maybe? Maybe not. There we go. So what we had to do is we met with our foreign language team, and we had to establish what's the English proficiency, because we had to establish English proficiency and then also another language proficiency. So our English proficiency standards are one of these two things. They can have an ACT English score of eighteen and an ACT reading score of twenty-two, and that's the benchmark for ACT. A lot of schools are doing that, so this is nothing, we're not out of the ordinary there. Or, for those students who are our native speakers, they have to have an access score of five overall, which means it's four point two in radiant and four point two in writing. If they have that access score, that's the score that gets them out of the ELL program. I don't know if you remember that from when Chris was talking about that with our ELL program. So, that's okay. Then we have to establish what are the language proficiency standards in their other language, whatever that would be. So, an AP exam score of four or a five as a junior, and we would have students, especially in our Spanish program, that would be taking the AP Spanish language exam, and they could have a four or five on that exam. If they have that and they meet the English, um, component, they're good, they have the seal. Now, the cost, just so you know, the cost of an AP exam is approximately a hundred dollars, so that they would still have to pay for that AP exam.[1791.22] They sign up around February. That's normal. And the test will be the first two weeks of May, which is a very normal process. And we would get the results in July. If that was a junior, we would make sure that they pay on the list their senior year. The other thing is, let's say they're a senior, okay, and they, and they want to take this exam. We wouldn't get those AP exams until July of their senior year. They already have their diploma. They'd have to come back in and get the seal, which is still fine. We just have to get a process for that. The other thing they can do is take what's called the Apple exam score, which is from the, the foreign language national standards. And they have to score at least an intermediate, high in all four areas. So that would be in listening, speaking, reading and writing. And again, this is nothing new. This is what the other districts are also doing. The cost of this Apple exam is twenty dollars. So we would charge the fee twenty, charge the students twenty dollars. They would sign up, we're trying to get this sign up to be in November. We can get an idea of how many students want to take this exam. And then we would test them on a Saturday, on January 21st, and then we have a makeup day also. So then we would know, we would get the results back, and then we would know before the AP exam if they actually would earn the seal of bilinguism. Okay, so what do we have to do? There's an application that we have to submit to the Illinois State Board of Ed, which we will do that. We have forty, basically we have all year to submit the application. We are going to do it soon here, like probably in September. We can't give out a seal until forty-five days after we submit the application. We need approval. So, but I don't think that'll be an issue. We also, when we apply, we have to give them a list of possible participants. So we're going to take our students who are in level fours for Spanish. And then those students who are in Spanish or like French three or German three, the, the course before their AP exam, we would give a list of all of those possible participants that have already earned the English component to it. Okay, so those would be our possible candidates. The state, that's what they're looking for. They're just one of those possible people that could have earned it. Then what we're going to do communication wise is we have to have an addendum to the student handbook. That's one of the requirements from the state. So we will put something out and we'll make sure all of the parents know that this could be a possibility for them. We're going to start meeting with the counselors so that they know that this program is going to be out there. Because we have students who not only take our foreign languages, the, the Spanish, the French and the German, but we have also students who speak Polish. Did I say that?
No.
Okay, sure. Okay. In any other language, okay. So we want to make sure the counselors, the counselors would probably be the people who would know who those students are. We're working very closely with our foreign language department to make sure they get the word out to those students who are qualified. Open house tonight, which are next week, we're going to have the flyers. We have them all ready to go. We're just going to distribute. So parents know that this is going to be an option for them. There will be information on the WTHS website. We'll have an email blast to those qualifying seniors and parents so that they know that they could actually do this. And we've talked to Dimitri Georgatsis. He teaches our journalism class. And he's going to work on some videos and public service announcements for us, just to get the kids aware that this is happening. So that's, I knew that we had any questions.
Willie, can I ask you a question? As we move into strategic plan, do you know, is the, is the fundamental push for this seal, this recognition, is it from a post-secondary position or is it from the business world? My reason for asking is it for, like, is it, we had talked about certifications and other kind of endorsements that our kids get along the way that are beyond high school, right? So whether it's in technology or other areas, I imagine that there's businesses out there that would like legitimacy to, if a student says that they're bilingual, that they have those.
And that was one of the reasons why I think the State Board of Ed kind of said, wow, this is kind of exciting for businesses to know. They're going to have a leg up. These students will have a leg up on any employment opportunities if they have that seal.
Right, because right now, I'm not sure there's a good way for businesses to necessarily validate. You know, can you ask somebody a few questions in Spanish?
There'd be no, yeah, there'd be no understanding of kind of the couple of.
Right. And then also at the end of the year, once we know who has all earned that seal of bilinguism, we just have to report those names to the state. So that would be the other.
Now, to earn it?
Yes.
I mean, where does this seal go? I'm sorry.
On their diploma.
It does go on the diploma?
Yep. We've already talked to, we work with Johnston's, right? They already been creating the seal last year for some other districts. So they, they know what they need to do. We just have to let them know.
But if we don't know until July?
We'll have an idea. We will, if it's an AP exam, correct, we'll kind of guess. But just so you, like, our AP exams in the foreign languages, usually those kids do very well. So we can probably just tell them we need so many of them and.
Oh, 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 okay.
Because we do the names on it. Yep. Johnston's. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll put a seal on there.
Thank you, Willie.
Yep.
All right, then let's move along into new business.
Did we forget some kid's celebration? You did it in your super kid's report. Okay. I just wanted to be sure.
So new business, let's talk about the approval for the resolution of the preparation of the tentative budget for sixteen seventy.
Well, first of all, we've been working as a team at Warren, the board's education, the staff members, the administration, all since probably November, to put together the tentative budget that would be put on public display beginning tomorrow. So there's, it's a long process, a very thoughtful process. And we spent a lot of time working together and, and going through different scenarios to come up with a budget that we do. What we're asking the board tonight to do is to adopt a resolution to put a notice in the newspaper to notify the public that there will be a public hearing at our second board meeting in September. It gives them the opportunity to comment on the budget if they so choose. The resolution also requires that the district put the budget on the public display for thirty days. And once that process is complete, the board will adopt the budget. So tonight's board action is to approve the resolution of the tentative budget, place that notice in the paper, place it on public display. So we're asking the board to approve that motion. Any questions?
I, I have a silly question. Just struck me. John Anderson, he is the board president, but he's not here tonight. So how, does John sign or will Mike sign in his place tonight? That's a good question.
That is a good question. It's certainly not a silly question. We'll have the board take action. And then I will check with, with the state on who would assign that. So.
Other questions? Can I have a motion?
I move to approve the resolution for preparation of tentative budget for the fiscal year 2017.
Second, motion by Conway. Second by Ball. It's roll call.
Ms. Campbell. Ms. Campbell.
Oh, you're.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
And Mr. Munda.
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Very good. The next agenda item is the approval of the donation agreement for DR Horton Cambridge Homes.
This is a donor, developer, development that's on the north side of Hunt Club Road, or excuse me, north on Gage's Lake, east of Hunt Club. It's a developer donation for sixty-five single family homes. The developer donations the district would expect to receive would be about a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. So we encourage the board to approve the developer donation, the DRH Cambridge.
Any questions?
I just have one question in paragraph five.
Sure.
Regarding the proof of payment. And it says, the proof of payment of the required contributions signed by the superintendent or visitor designated by the regional superintendent of schools. So is the money going to their regional office of education and then they send it here? Or, I guess I was confused as to who was actually getting the money. And my conservator said, if it's our money, that it stays with us and it doesn't, or something else.
Actually, the village of Garry, which this would be the village, the developer donations come to us directly. In different communities like maybe Waukegan or Mill Creek, they, they handle it differently. Sometimes it may be paleo-tated, but not really, are we?
Okay.
Nothing else? Can I have a motion, please? Nothing? And I'll move to approve the developer donations agreement with DRH Cambridge Homes Inc., dated August 1st, 2016, as presented. Second. Motion by Munda. Second by Drake. Roll call.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
And Mr. Munda.
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Very good. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the revised fiscal year seventeen staffing plan.
Last month, I brought to the board's attention that we needed to add one more aid, a plus eight for a student that was placed at Laramont School. And then I would make the action this month in our revised staffing plan. In section page one, it would be conditional positions as of today, a plus eight, based on that student at Laramont, added to our staffing plan.
I move to approve the revised FY seventeen staffing plan as presented.
Second. Motion by Biondi. Second by Drake. Roll call.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
And Mr. Munda.
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Next on our agenda is the approval of the payment of bills for eight sixteen twenty sixteen. We've got to separate a couple out here. So let's do our first check. I'll move to approve payment of check number three three one two seven eight, in the amount of thirteen thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars to FGM. Second.
Good, stand.
Okay. Motion by Munda. Second by Walz. Roll call.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi.
Yes. No. You like, first call. It's, it's a yes.
It's a yes, okay. Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
And Mr. Munda.
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Next one is check number three three one two eight eight, in the amount of four thousand, sixty-eight dollars and eighty-one cents of Hodges.
Seven.
Motion by Munda. Second by Conway. Roll call.
Ms. Campbell.
No.
Mrs. Biondi.
No.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Mr. Munda.
Yes.
I have four yes and two no. Motion carries.
Thank you. And I'll give the approval of payment bills for eight sixteen twenty-six. Carol, do you have a final number for me?
Yes, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents.
Eight thirty-five and eighty-one cents?
Yes.
And I'll move to approve the payment of bills for eight sixteen sixteen, in the amount of seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and eighty-one cents. Motion by Munda. Second by Drake. Roll call.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Munda.
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Next agenda item is the approval of higher recommendations for exhibit A. And we did have a change to the agenda that is now going to include twenty-one through fifty-four. Can I have a motion, please?
I move to approve the personal recommendations for exhibit A. It was twenty-one through forty, forty-eight, and then number forty-nine would be Christina Cook, FMA, James Gray, resignation, Mary Kovak, legal absence, Jana Leach, legal absence, William Odo, legal absence, Sarah Bedal.
Second. Motion by Conway. Second by Munda. Roll call.
Mrs. Biondi.
Yes.
Mr. Campbell.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
And Mr. Munda.
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Final agenda item is the approval of regular minutes, regular meeting minutes and the executive session minutes of July nineteenth, 2016. A motion, please.
I move to approve regular meeting minutes and executive session minutes of July nineteenth, 2016.
Second. Motion by Drake. And a second by Walz. Roll call.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi.
Yes.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
Mr. Munda.
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
Any other business? And I'll move to adjourn the meeting. Motion by Munda. Second by Drake. Roll call. Sorry.
Mr. Walz.
Yes.
Mrs. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Campbell.
Yes.
Mrs. Biondi.
Yes.
Mr. Drake.
Yes.
And Mr. Munda.
Yes.
I have six yes. Motion carries.
We good? Thank you, everybody.